All right, we are back. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out actions that were taken in closed session.
Thank you, President Jamal. There were five separate actions that the board took in closed session. On a seven to zero vote, the board has approved a separation agreement for an academic administrator at Irvine Valley College. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a separation agreement for a classified manager at the Advanced Technology and Education Park. On a seven to zero vote, the board voted to approve the continuation of a general leave of 2.33 hours per week to a classified employee at Saddleback College to teach a three-unit course during the spring 2018 semester. On a seven to zero vote, the board voted to approve a general leave of 2.5 hours per week to a classified employee at Saddleback College to teach a one-unit course during the spring 2018 semester. And finally, on a seven to zero vote, the board voted to approve a reduction in hours from 40 to 30 hours per week for a classified employee at Saddleback College. And those were the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Now, we'll proceed to the invocation, which is not going to be led by me. I led it at the November meeting. It's going to be led by trustee Prendergast. And then the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Lang.
I just would like to offer a moment of silence on behalf of all of our brave firefighters and first responders dealing with the large number of fires, both in numbers of how many there are, but the number of acres that have burned statewide, especially in the Southern California area that affects some of our families and friends, and just have our thoughts go to those people. Thank you.
Please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, trustee Lang. We are now at item 2.4, which is our annual organizational meeting and Facilities Corporation meeting. And the way I think we're going to do it is to have the officers elected first. All right. And I think we'll, we start off with the office of the president. I do. Trustee Milchuker.
I nominate Tim Jamal for president of the Board of Trustees. He's here.
Second the motion.
Thank you, both. I think the electronic motion is from trustee Milchuker. And thank you, trustee Lang. And the second is from trustee Witt. No, you're good.
Okay, okay.
So, we have a motion from trustee Milchuker and a second from trustee Witt. Thank you for the nomination. I appreciate it. And I'll hopefully be able to serve another year and continue to move us forward. Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, motion carries by six trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you, student trustee Lyson. Thank you, fellow board members. All right. Now, we have the election of our vice president. We have a...
I'd like to have a request to speak.
Trustee Prendergast.
I'd like to nominate Marcia Milchuker for vice president.
I second it.
Excellent. We have a motion. Yeah. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast to nominate trustee Milchuker to the office of vice president, an honorary second from trustee Jay, but an actual second from trustee Witt. Any discussion on the item? Trustee Milchuker, would you like to say anything?
No, thank you so much for your nomination.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the item. I think someone hasn't voted.
Oh, I need to abstain? Okay.
Of course.
Okay.
And we have a unanimous trustee yes vote, six trustees yes, one trustee abstention, and student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Milchuker. All right, let's move on to the office of clerk of the board.
I'd like to nominate trustee Prendergast.
And I'd like to second it.
Okay, we can adjust. We have a motion from trustee Witt to nominate trustee Prendergast to be clerk of the board. And we have a... Who's the second from?
I seconded it.
Yeah, it's just, we need to... So, we have a second from trustee Milchuker? Trustee Prendergast, you would like to say anything? Correct.
Marcia, do second.
It won't, because it says you have motion.
Well, someone did an oral motion, but same time someone put in electronically to move it.
I withdrew my motion, because I voted electronically. And then Terry voted orally.
Trustee Witt made the initial motion, and then it was a second from trustee Milchuker. This is the challenge of technology.
Yeah.
All right. Excellent. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Prendergast.
Thank you all for your support.
Now, we move on to exhibit B, the appointment of secretary and assistant secretary. I will make the motion to nominate Tom Fallow as secretary of the board.
Assistant secretary is... Are you doing them separate?
Do we need to do them separate? I amend my motion to nominate Tom Fallow as secretary of the board and Jim Bice as acting assistant secretary for the Board of Trustees. And there's, appears to be a second from trustee Witt. And any discussion?
Oh, yes. Didn't let me do it. Just clarification on the motion. In the concept that it's an acting chancellor position, should we name the position rather than the person? Both of them are acting positions, so at some point, there's going to be a replacement?
I think we just needed...
Do you have to redo it at a new board meeting? Or can you just name the position of chancellor and vice chancellor of business services as the secretary and assistant secretary?
I think we would have to name the person individually, no? Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Just know it'll come back.
It's going to probably come back.
And I don't think it ever did in the past. Kind of why I'm bringing it up.
I see. Well...
Yeah, but we've been going quite a while now with an acting chancellor and an acting vice chancellor of business services, and we have not voted to change those names in these positions since last December. And those names have changed since last December. That's why I was hoping there was a way we could just name the position rather than the person. But if we can't, we just need to remember that next time, when there's a change, we need to bring it back to the board.
Noted.
Trying to make less work for you, but I guess I can't.
Noted. Okay, so we have a motion for the appointment of the secretary and assistant secretary. And let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote. And, well, six trustee yes votes, one trustee I don't think has voted, and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. All right. Let's move on to our committees. First committee is the representative to the nominating committee to the Committee on School District Organization. Not sure what that is. Okay. Well, do we have a nomination for someone to serve in this, on this committee?
Did trustee Prendergast want to do it?
No, I was going to say Jim did such a great job. I think she should stay on it.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I'll second that nomination.
All right, so we have a nominee, we have a motion from trustee Prendergast to have trustee Wright continue to serve as a representative on the nominating committee to the Committee on School District Organization. And a second from trustee Lang. Do you want to... Trustee Prendergast? Would you like to amend your motion and also nominate an alternate?
Oh, do we need to do that as well?
I think so. TJ Prendergast, trustee Prendergast is the alternate.
I don't think I can nominate myself as the alternate, can I?
Sure you can. Does someone want to amend the motion and...
Offer an amendment, yeah.
I'll amend the motion and make trustee Prendergast the alternate.
I don't consider it a friendly amendment, but I will accept it.
All right, so we have a nomination on the floor for the appointment of trustee representatives to the nominating committee, representative to be trustee Wright, the alternate to be trustee Prendergast. Can we, any further questions? Let's go ahead and vote.
Wait. This says trustee representatives. This says all trustee representatives. Are we supposed to vote?
No, no, this is just on the...
On this one.
Well, I voted yes already, but you know...
This is on the nominating committee.
Okay, okay.
It's a general heading for all the different positions.
Oh, I see, okay.
But we're voting one by one on each seat. It's not tabulating the votes. Are we waiting for somebody? All right, we have five yes votes, trustee yes votes, two abstentions, and a student advisory yes vote. Let's move on to the district's political action rep to the OCSBA, which is the Orange County School Board Association. Current representative is trustee Witt. Looks like we have one representative, no alternate.
Such a fine job.
Yeah, thank you. I second that.
But, hold on, I also would like to, for the alternate, I have to say that trustee Prendergast was there every time I was there.
I'm a board member, I have to.
I know you're a board member, but I just want to acknowledge that, that you could be the alternate.
For some reason, we didn't have an alternate last year, so I don't think there is an alternate. But thank you for, trustee Prendergast, for being there, because you are on the board. You're still on the board of the School Board Association, correct? All right. All right, so I think we can go ahead and vote. We have five trustee yes votes, two abstentions, and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Witt.
Thank you.
Now have the representative to the Orange County Legislative Task Force. The current representative is trustee Milchuker.
Would someone like to do it, you know? Because I've done it three years in a row. I love it, but I want to give somebody else an opportunity if they want to do it.
I heard the word love, so...
It got my...
And trustee Wright, do you want to do that?
We also need an alternate. You.
I will amend my own motion to add trustee Lang as the alternate. I've amended the motion to include trustee Lang as the alternate.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. We have six yes votes, six trustee yes votes, one abstention, one student advisory yes vote. Congratulations on that. And now, we have representatives to the South Orange County Community College District Audit Committee. Current chair is trustee Lang. And we have two additional representatives that are currently on that committee, trustee Wright and trustee Prendergast. So, we need nominations for a chair and two additional representatives to serve on the committee.
I nominate trustee Lang to be chair again if he wants to, and they did such a great job, trustee Wright and trustee Prendergast to serve on the committee if they would...
That's fine.
Is that okay with...
Yeah.
Okay. Unless somebody else really wants to do it. Okay.
Okay. We have, then we have a nomination from trustee Milchuker and a second from trustee Jay for the Audit Committee, Dave Lang to be the chair, trustees Wright and Prendergast to be the representatives. Close vote. Four trustee yes votes, three abstentions, and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Lang, to be continuous chair. You're doing an excellent job, I agree. Now, we have, I think we're going to take these separate. First, let's take the representative to the Saddleback College, the trustee representatives to the Saddleback College Foundation.
Well, I'd like, I've motioned, can I...
You can do, can we do both?
I think that, as far as I understand, trustee Jay is the representative to Irvine Valley College, and trustee Witt is representative to Saddleback College Foundation. And I think they've done such a wonderful job this year, and they like doing it, that I nominate them to do it again this year, if they would agree to do it again this year.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. So, we have nomination from trustee Milchuker and a second from trustee Prendergast to have trustee Witt continue to serve as a representative to the Saddleback College Foundation, and trustee Jay to continue as a representative to the Irvine Valley College Foundation. Motion carries by a six to one, six yes votes, six trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. Now, moving on to the board, exhibit D, board meeting calendar to approve the proposed meeting dates. Is there a motion? Correct. We have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Wright. Do we have any questions on the calendar?
I may have a problem in July, but no matter where we put it, unless it's on the, actually, the Monday before that, and that's really too soon from the June, but I can always call in. I don't know. I don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay, but I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Got it. All right. So, I think we need to go ahead and vote. Calendar is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Now, move on to the establishment of agenda planning calendar, exhibit E, and a motion to approve the 2018 planning calendar. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Milchuker. Do we have any comments or questions? Trustee Lang.
Yeah, just to note that there are, oh, sorry, that there are several items here that either don't specify a time or don't specify a date in those particular months. And I suspect that's probably not unusual, that we have just determined that as we got closer to that period of time. But I think it's worth pointing out.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Calendar's approved. Finally, we're on to exhibit F, agenda format, the approval of the agenda format. A motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions on the format? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. The agenda format is approved. Now, I think we need to adjourn, briefly adjourn our session. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to go into, I don't think we're adjourning, we're going to recess. Want me to get a motion to adjourn? So, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Well, we have a motion from trustee Witt, a second from trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion to adjourn for a short period of time is passed by unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. We are in adjournment.
Now, you're calling to order.
Right. I have to call the order, the special meeting, the Facilities Corporation of the South Orange County Community College District. And now, we're approving the Facilities Corporation, exhibit G. And, but the officers need to be changed. Do you want me to read out the officers? Okay. So, Facilities Corporation meeting, election of office, directors and officers, myself as precedent. We have trustee Milchuker as vice president, trustee Prendergast as secretary, chief financial officer, Jim Bice, assistant secretary, Tom Fallow, and assistant treasurer, Jim Bice. Is that correct? All right, so we need a motion. A motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Witt. Let's go ahead and vote. The Facilities Corporation, special meeting, the Board of Directors is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now, I need a motion to adjourn the Facilities Corporation meeting. A motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
Vote electronically. Well, he should beat you to it. Second from trustee Milchuker. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now, we will go into recess for a few minutes to rearrange the dais here, and we'll come back shortly. Thank you.
Oh, Terry, this is from you. You were disappointed in what? No, I didn't think about that. I really didn't think about it. Yeah, thank you for this. I don't know what it is, but thank you. It's not liquor. Because I don't drink. I guess we're trading flights, so I'll have to, can you unplug that over there? Do you want me to unplug it? I have all my computers all set up over here.
People got to get used to...
Computer city here.
Certain way.
If not, this computer lasts two, this one lasts two hours.
My other one? Oh, this is Terry. I got you. I got you. Dave, you want to come get your water?
I sit by Terry. Which one's wrong?
That one.
This is mine, right? This is mine, yes, and this is my backpack. My backpack, and my water. I don't think that's my Diet Coke.
That's mine.
Oh, that's yours, okay.
Joyce, this is your last one?
Well, then, I guess you didn't care if I made it easier for you guys.
Thank you so much. I'm trying to be very, very, very...
Oh, my goodness.
How's the air down there, David?
I'll just use the computer as long as it goes, and then it'll...
You lost all your outlets.
I lost all my outlet. The only one I, because all the outlets have been used. Everything outlet has been used. So...
We ready to go?
Yep, you have a, you have power strip, but yeah, oh, yeah, power strip. I mean, that really makes sense.
Oh, they are? Oh, okay.
Yeah, they got to switch our...
Oh, right.
Mine says Dave Lang.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be interesting?
I probably don't need my computer.
Not too long ago. Hey, Marcia, when you first went... When you first went on the board, did they allow, did you allow proxy votes? Like, if you weren't here, could you give your proxy to someone? Back in the day, early, when you were first on, early nineties.
I don't remember, I don't remember ever doing that. I don't remember, I don't remember at all.
No, no, I was just wondering, because it was done by Congress, as late as the early nineties, you could have, you could give your proxy to another member. So, give TJ's vote to me.
Okay, that sounds good. I have my computer here, but I don't think I'm going to need it.
Need a plug for anything?
Are you cleared?
Here's my, here's my board report. I didn't get to practice it, so...
I didn't print it on any...
I printed it, but I, when I practiced it, I keep it exactly two minutes. Since I didn't practice it, I'm just going to try to talk to Master something.
Look at this.
That's my mouse.
Did you show it to TJ?
No, this is my mouse. I can buy these for $7 a person.
Or you can not.
That's true.
So, everything's good?
Yeah.
I'm not.
I'm worried about the time.
I'm worried about the time.
I can't even read emails.
I'm trying to limit them. Believe me. So, I mean, are you okay with receiving occasional text messages?
Oh, yeah, I, I always want to.
Okay. I'm trying to limit it to your list, I know that. I'm like, God, I don't want to send this to him.
I know.
But I think should call him. Not because, it's just time, that's what I'm...
It's great.
Can I show you something?
My bad. Okay. We are now reconvening, our meeting, and we'll go to 2.5 public comments. Do I have any requests for public comments? There are no requests for public comments, and now we'll move on to board reports. We'll start out to my left, Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. I had a lot going on, as I know all of the people sitting at the dais, because they were there too. I just wanted to announce that I had a wonderful time at the retirements. It was joyous and it was sad, because many that are retiring, I grew up with, and I know that we will have a loss. Look forward to new people. But our, our team is breaking up, but we'll get a new team. But I just wanted to tell you, the parties were great, and at one time I thought we were gonna roast someone. It was fun, I enjoyed that. I also like to say that the pinning ceremony this year was, was also beautiful. You know that I've attended, over the last 40 years, the pinning ceremonies. But for the first time, it was delightfully different. Because our own president was up there to congratulate the graduates and to welcome their families. And in my 40 years of going to pinning ceremonies, that's never happened, and I'd like to say thank you. It was very personal. Also, I really had a kick at IVC. I went to the end of the year holiday celebration. I don't do games, I'm not a good person to have on your team for trivia, just so you know. And it, it just, I, I went ahead and volunteered, and I actually helped, and our team won. And I know that sounds funny, but to be this old and get that much, have that much fun at a game, I'm so glad that I went. And I also wanna tell you, at IVC, the camaraderie, the respect, the fun that you have, that was shown there that day, was awesome. I really enjoyed it. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the Foundation Board Meeting, as I am the representative, I was out of town. And I wanna wish all of you a wonderful holiday, and get some rest, and enjoy, truly enjoy.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
I also attended a number of retirement parties. I attended the, the party for Don Rickner. It was a wonderful party, it was very close, we were very close together, and it was just nice to be able to honor him. He was our Executive Director for the Saddleback College Foundation, and did a wonderful job. Also, our Vice President for College Administrative Services, Carol Hilton. I've known Carol for a long time. In fact, when I became a dean, she was probably one of the first ones that I, I sat with at a table and got acquainted, and that friendship went on for a long time. And also, the party for the administrators, managers of Human Resources, Beverly Johnson, Teddy Lorch, and Fran Miller. That was a wonderful experience. And we've got several people in our audience today that I just wanna thank. Joyce Bartlamayne, I've known her for a number of years, and we're gonna miss her. She's just been. She, she helped me when I was the acting, acting dean of Mass Science Engineering, Health Sciences and Human Services. She was down in Health Sciences and Human Services, a wonderful person. Mark Crewman, I don't know, Mark's someplace, but he's in the back, but he's, he's gonna be missed. And Terry Flugeman is here, and she's gonna be missed. And Teddy Lorch is back in the back, I can see, so that's great. The other thing I wanted to comment on is I, I attended the Feast of Lights, the musical performance at McKinney Theater. I attended on a Saturday at the 5:00 PM session. It was a wonderful session. It sort of brings in the holiday spirit when you go to an event like that. And I just also wanted to comment on what Trustee Pendergast said about the fires. I read an article today, it says about fires have affected California colleges. Their finals, their move out, their homework, their deadlines, and so forth. So there, there's been a lot of students that have been affected by these, these fires. And I know, and up in Northern California, the same thing, so we, it's, these fires are not, are not good. I remember 10 years ago, when we had a fire in our backyard. The fire came right up to our, almost our house. I had three firemen in our backyard, they kept the house watered down, so it wouldn't catch on fire. But fires, these fires are very dangerous. And again, I wanna wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. Trustee Pendergast.
So I had not, got kind of into a rut here. I wasn't able to attend any of the early retirements, so I just got into the mode where I didn't go to any of them, so I wouldn't seem like I was playing favorites. But, you know, truthfully, I just, I just can't make them with my coaching schedule and teaching schedule. But I do reiterate sentiments from the people that have been able to go, that is, some of you are gonna be very sorely missed, and it's gonna be very big shoes to fill. And congratulations on your, on your next adventures, but it is gonna be a little bit sad, bittersweet. I did attend the Orange County Pathway Showcase. The presentation, President Greg Anderson, you were, you were reading from a script that was well-prepared, so. You did a great job, along with the Superintendent of Orange County Public Schools, Al Maharos, and, you know, you guys did a great job. It's always fun hearing from rocket scientists what, what rocket science is. And apparently, it means blowing up rockets, and failing a lot, but it was, it was good. We had, we had the Feast of Lights, I went to the Friday night show. It was, it was really, you know, I always try and read through the program, see if there's any former students or anybody I know that's gonna be performing. This year, there was a name missing, which was nice, because I remember last year, there was like this piercing noise in my ear, and then I realized that person missing was sitting next to me, Trustee Milchker, so. No, I'm just kidding. She, she did an excellent job last year, so I know, I know she missed being up there, but it was, it was really nice for her to see it from our perspective. And then, we had the Nurses' Pinning, as, as Trustee Witt mentioned, very, very nice. It was very nice to have present, the words that you spoke were, were good. And 53 graduates this year, so, so very nice. And then, as was said before, happy holidays and a joyous break.
Thank you. Trustee Pendergast. Trustee Milchker.
Thank you, I'll try not to repeat all the wonderful things that we've all done this year. You've got a great board that attends so many things, so many, and really supports the colleges in this way. As all of you know, 116 people retired, so it's the end of an era for, for us, and beginning of a new era. So it's end of one wonderful era, beginning of another wonderful era. So it's, we're gonna be fine, but we miss a lot of the people that are retiring. Since the last board meeting, I attended all the retirement parties. These are the retirement parties I attended. Don Rickner, Carol Hilton, Hilton, IVC Classified Staff, Mark Crewman, our cameraman for so many years, Donna Raines Schoestek, the Dean of Nursing, the District HR Staff with Teddy Lorch, Beverly Johnson, and Fran Miller, the Payroll Department, the District, District Services Retirement, with our wonderful Joyce Bartlamayne, who we'll miss terribly, and Terry Flugeman, who will also miss terribly. She's, she's off to some wonderful adventures. And we work so well with all of you, and we miss you very, very much. I also attended the Orange County Pathway Showcase, where President Gregory Anderson spoke so beautifully, as, as Trustee Pendergast mentioned. And Saddleback College and IVC were very well represented in their, in their high-tech positions that we have students trained for. I attended the IVC Feast of Lights, but this year I didn't sing in it, so it was better this year than, than last year. The nurse pinning ceremony was, was really incredible, as usual. I really, it's a really nice ceremony. See, our nurses go off into the world, and, and they're the nurses in all our local hospitals. They take care of all of us, so it's really, really important that they're trained so beautifully and so well here. I attended the IVC Business Leaders Society Motivational Speakers Event, where Dave Melzer spoke and did wonderful motivational speaks to our business students at Irvine Valley College. I was on Laguna Woods TV, where Ken Goldenberg interviewed me. You could find it on YouTube if you wanna watch it. And the end of the year holiday party at IVC was always fun, and I could describe you what they do. Each department makes these fabulous baskets, and they donate them, and then you buy tickets. And you put, you put your ticket in different baskets, and all the money that's raised goes to IVC scholarships for students, and so it's, it's a really nice event, even though I didn't win anything. And the, the, I also attended the 15th Semiannual Scientific Meeting of the Saddleback College Biological Science Society. And our students get incredible opportunities that I didn't get as an undergraduate or a graduate student in my biology program. They were, are able to present programs, to present posters, and they're really relevant to what's going on today. One of them was about the darkling beetle larvae, which are actually mealworms, consuming polystyrene waste, actually eating up our plastic bags and styrofoam, dental enamel, and critical pH, telling you the proper things to eat, so that you won't rot your teeth. And the effect of difenhydramine on sleep, and coffee versus placebo on performance. These are really relevant things today, so really, we really do good work. And our professors that put these programs on don't make any more money for giving these opportunities for the students, so it's really a great thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Milchker. Thank you for being so well-prepared.
Oh, one more thing. I wanna congratulate Grace Garcia for, for winning the District Manager of the Year. Well, well deserved, and I wanna give her a big hand for that.
That's okay. So like Trustee Pendergast, I meant to attend many retirements, but I didn't attend many at all. And I, I really wanna thank those in the district. I didn't realize it was up to 116. So many people across the district, both colleges, here in the room here. Terry, Joyce, what a great job you've done for us for five years I've been here, it's been awesome. Teddy, I've got a chance to work with you a little bit, and thank you for your service. Carol, sorry, I meant to come to your party as well, and I, and I missed it. Who else in the room here is retiring? I think I got every, oh, Mark, Mark in the back. I saw Mark a couple of weeks ago at OG's admission VAO, and, and it was, it was great to see him there. I did, so thank you for all you've done, and we wish you best of luck in, in what you're gonna do in the future. I did attend the Saddleback College Foundation Lunch, and I thought that was well-attended. Dr. Anderson, I hope it's gonna bear some results for the foundation. And, and the last thing I wanted to say is that, something about Washington. There is, there is a tax bill moving through Washington DC right now that I have a lot of concerns about, as an elected official. It would impose a tax increase on a significant number of constituents in our district, in our, in both our, all of our areas, and in the district at large. I, I'm not a big fan of the way it's currently written. Not opposed to paying a fair share, as we all know, or should know. California is a donor state to the federal government, and no matter how you parse this, it would be a tax increase, as currently written, on many of us in the room. And so, I, I pride myself on being a real fiscal conservative. I am. I really mean that. But I think the way this is currently written leaves something to be desired, and we'll just have to watch and see how that process moves forward. There are a lot of people talking, that they're going to make some deals that'll spare Orange County, and let's see, let's see how it ends up. And maybe we'll all get a holiday present by the end of next week, and, and California won't get double taxed as it's currently written. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I'll turn it over to Trustee Jay.
I also attended some retirement parties, which was kinda sad for me, 'cause I hate to lose these wonderful, wonderful employees. They've been so great. And yet, I'm sad, but yet I'm happy for them, because they'll be able to spend a lot more time with their families, which they well deserved. I attended the Feast of Lights, I attended two performances. I brought guests with me to both performances. The performances were wonderful, and I always feel it can't get better, but it does. I especially enjoyed hearing John Huntington and his excellent vocal performance. It was a very special treat for me for the evening. I had also attended the Saddleback College President's Circle Annual Holiday Luncheon for the Saddleback College Foundation. This event, I was extremely well-attended, and two, two students spoke on their, what the foundation has done for them with their scholarships. I've also been very active with IVC's Adopt a Family for the Christmas Program. I have adopted two single female students with children. It's so much fun to go buy Christmas gifts for them, and I just love this program, it's just wonderful. And here's a reminder for everybody, save the date, Saturday, March 10th, for IVC's Celebrating Excellence. Excellence, the Foundation Awards Dinner at the Tulip Rose in Costa Mesa. And again, I wanna wish everybody a happy, happy holidays.
Thank you, Trustee Jay. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm gonna sound like a broken record here too, because I also wanted to mention how bittersweet it is to lose some of the great people that are retiring in our district. I also attended Don Rickner's retirement party. I knew Don from the IVC Foundation days before he came over to Saddleback College Foundation. Fortunately, Carol, sorry, I missed your retirement party, but do express my appreciation to you. And I also wanna express my appreciation, as has already been said, to Joyce, and Terry, and Teddy, and those that are in the room that will be, will be moving on to a nicer chapter perhaps in their life, I don't know. I also attended President Anderson's Annual Holiday Luncheon for his President Circle Group, and appreciated both his remarks, the students that paid tribute to the scholarships that they received from the foundation, and also having a chance to hear from the new Saddleback College Foundation Director, Winnie Johnson. Nice to have her on board. Couple of things in President Rockmore's report that I picked up that I wanted to especially call out. One was congratulations to Daniel Lusko, who is an absolute treasurer of our districts, and has a new CD, which I wanna purchase, by the way, so put me down for, for one of those. Gary Rybalt, and the presentations that he made to the China International Conference, and also Irvine Valley College Women's Volleyball Team, who are national champions. Tremendous accomplishment. And finally, with this being, again, our last meeting, board meeting of this year, I wanna do, wish everyone a very happy holiday, and much health, success, and joy throughout the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Trustee Larson.
I'll keep this short. I do want to express my appreciation to Joyce, and Terry, and Mr. Crewman in the back for your service to the college. You've done a great job, you know, helping myself and students pursue success. Recently, I started a club, I think I told you last week, or last meeting, and I sold little succulents around campus. For every nine no's, you get one yes and a happy smile. And I've accumulated $500. With this money, I'm working with Barbara Cox, and it will be given to the foundation, and hopefully given to a bright student. I look forward to working with her in selecting the student. I learned that there's a difference, difference between an scholarship and an endowment. And with an endowment, there's a long-term benefit. So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, my efforts will continue and leave some sort of legacy for the students. On that note, I wish everyone a happy holiday and New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chancellor's Report.
Trustee Jamal, board members, ladies and gentlemen, it's indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here. I hope you know that I'm not going to any functions, unfortunately, because of my limited timeline for service here in the district, but what I've met in my work job, and just casually talking to a few students every now and then, this is a great place, and I'm happy to be here and proud to be associated with you all. There is no finer employee in this district than the one that leads me around and guides me, and that's by the graces of Ms. Garcia, that I'm usually in the right place and trying to do the right thing. So I have to tell you that it's wonderful to be associated with her. And I think that any smart CEO, when they come on board, really wants to give something to somebody, and I'd like to give something to you, Mr. President. They said they'd pick me up over here.
I'm just telling you.
I would like to recognize the Board President for five years of service, and for being the President for. and for being the president for one year, or for the 2017.
That's not why I pushed you over to the mic.
Yeah, I know, but you won a party, so here's your party.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're supposed to stand somewhere.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
You don't have to do this. I...
I had to do it. They said I had to.
It's not necessary.
I did a shake your hand, too.
All right.
Okay. You're supposed to take this.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right.
You're president.
Thanks. Okay, college presidents' reports, going with Irvine Valley College, it looks like.
Well, thank you very much. And first of all, I would like to congratulate all of our new and returning board leadership. It'd be wonderful working with you in the coming year again. And also, I'd like to welcome my new boss, Tom Fallow, acting chancellor. I've known Tom for a very long time, and in our short period of time in this role, I have to say he's been fantastic. Really enjoy working with you, and I look forward to the hours and days and months that we have ahead here, so that's great. And then finally, really not finally, but I want to thank all of you for the work that you do for our district. You probably don't hear that often enough, but absolutely thank you, and have a great, safe, and restful holiday.
Thank you. Saddleback College president.
Board president Jamal, members of the board. I'd like to cover three points very briefly, and at the risk of redundancy, I do want to acknowledge the opportunity to speak at six different events, all of which were mentioned here. And I do take the criticism very clearly that one should deviate as appropriate from a scripted commentary. So my counterpart on the stage, when we had a number of CEOs from K-12 and from higher education, my counterpart on the stage knew when to deviate and deviated very well, and I didn't. And our district suffered because of that. I apologize. The compliments, however, from the counterparts, the CEOs across this county, were incredibly generous. Our reputation across the county is stellar, and I don't think that I did too much damage that afternoon. The second one I want to talk about is the great legacy that you all have commented on. Trustees spoke with admiration and respect for the colleagues, for our colleagues who are retiring, and that those words matter. Those are the words that we, as presidents, will bring back to our faculty and staff who need to hear them, who need to hear the respect that you all have for them, so we deeply appreciate them. Having said that, we do intend to build on that great legacy. We are now currently hiring two vice presidents, one of administrative services, the other of instruction, and I am perfectly confident we will build a strong team, a strong team to lead Saddleback into the future. I'm grateful to the faculty and staff who are serving on those committees. It's a tremendous time commitment, and it's through their service that we will be blessed with wonderful colleagues to join us for the future. Finally, I do want to just put in your head once again that we are gearing up for the 50th anniversary of Saddleback College. And in that 50th anniversary, we will require and request the services of all the trustees, all the trustees, in various events and commemorations. So please keep your ears open for that as we hear more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson. Now to ASG IVC.
All right. Hello. Hello and good evening. For my report, I just have a couple of items. In collaboration with the Office of Student Life and Equity Programs, the International Student Program, ASG of IVC, and the International Club, we all worked together to celebrate International Educational Week during the days of Monday, November 13th, through Friday, November 17th. We are proud to highlight that we had over 740 international students from 52 countries currently studying at IVC. We had different activities scheduled throughout that week, such as on Wednesday, November 15th, student-led groups hosted line dances, food tastings, calligraphy demonstrations, fashion shows, and live music from Taiwan, Japan, Indonesia, Korea, and Mexico. Secondly, the ASG of IVC Student Activities Committee hosted their annual end of the year, or end of the semester cram week Stress Buster Event on Wednesday, November 29th, from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM. There were bunnies, puppies, and massages. Study packs of free Scantrons, Blue Books, and pencils were distributed to all ASIVC students at the event. And just as the fall semester comes to a close, ASG of IVC will also be preparing for our various events in the spring. And I also just wanted to say thank you all for your support towards me as president of ASG of IVC and all the hard work that everyone has done for the board of trustees, and just really appreciate the hard work you guys all do, so just wanted to say happy holidays as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. ASG Saddleback College.
Thank you. I attended the President Circle Luncheon, which was organized in part with the foundation as well, and I found the event to be very inspiring and motivating to me as a student. Myself and our ASG Vice President, Kamir Faiz, we attended the ASG of IVC Senate Meeting, and it was a really great experience for us to see how IVC runs their meetings. We learned a lot, and it was a great way for us to network and collaborate together. So I'm looking forward to attending more of them next semester with Cam Faiz. In addition, we had our Gaucho's Go Green Day event last Thursday, which was hosted by our new Council for Campus Sustainability, and we had different organizations, local organizations, come and talk about sustainability and ways in which we can be sustainable in our own lives, but also at Saddleback College, and that was very well-attended. And we have been focusing also on our plans for next semester as well, so thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Okay, on that positive note, let's move on to... Oh, I'm sorry.
Look. Trustee Witt requests to speak.
Oh, trustee Witt.
I just have to say one word to both of you. Awesome. That video that all of you put together, I watched it teen times, sent it to all my friends, say, "Look what these students can do." What you've done at IVC with all of the cultures, and I wish I would have known about the food. I have to say that I really respect all that you do, and your teams are awesome. Thank you.
Well said. Okay, now we're going to move on to board request for reports. Do we have any requests? Seeing none. We don't have any discussion items tonight, so now we'll move... Oh, trustee Lang.
Yes, before we proceed to the consent calendar, I was going to suggest that we consider advancing item 6.8 in approving our chancellor's... Let's see, do I have that right? 6.8. No, I don't have... Is it 6.10?
The Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions?
No, I'm sorry, 6.10, which is 6.10, which is the employment agreement for our acting chancellor. Seems to me it's appropriate that we should proceed to that before we take action on other items.
Sure. Without objection, let's... Do we have a motion? We have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Milchker to approve the employment agreement for Dr. Fallow.
Board president?
Yes.
In accordance with the new Brown Act requirement provision, we need to at least specify some of the terms of the contract.
Please.
I would specify for the board that the term of the contract is November 20th... I'm sorry, effective November 20th, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, at a rate of $158.65 for up to 275 hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information. Are you asking for additional time to speak, trustee Lang?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the contract. And the contract is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations. Glad to have you. Okay, let's move back to the consent calendar, 5.0. Do we have any polls? Trustee Lang.
Pardon me. I'm interested in pulling 5.9 and 5.14.
Okay, I was going to pull 5.9, so that's good. 5.9, 5.14.
I want to pull 5.6.
Okay. Any other polls?
I just want clarification on 5.4, 5.5, and 5.10.
Okay, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.10.
And I want a 5.13 explanation.
Got a lot of polls tonight. 5.13. All right, so we have those polls. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the items? There's a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. So the balance of the items are approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Let's go to 5.4. Trustee Witt.
Okay, I wanted to ask for, not clarification, but you talked about self-assessment and the self-assessment tool, and you have 33 responses from IVC, and then Saddleback said that they receive four cross-functional teams, three student groups. If we're going to do a study of any sort, we need to show number, and the higher the number, the more reliable the results. So who do I ask on this one? Is anyone here from Pathways? I would just like to see that we show numbers when we are doing the results of our surveys. I think that's very important. Okay, and then the next thing is, I noticed... Hold on, let me get my tabs. What Saddleback is doing and then what IVC is doing, and maybe the presidents can take it back. I can see that Saddleback has started certain things. IVC has already have them in progress, and I'm certain that you two are communicating on this. I think it's a beautiful time that what worked for IVC, that we hear about it at Saddleback and vice versa. I'm hoping that that happens because I looked at this and read this. All right, then I want to compliment, I really do, on the inquiries. The survey itself, it's very well-done. I like the way it was set up. I just would like to know that when you have early adoption or scaling in progress, if the timing, if we... What do you surmise? What's the amount of time that will take? Will it take three months, six months? Because the pathways I really would like to see in full scale. But I wanted to say thank you very much for being so detailed in your inquiries. I like research, so thank you.
All right. Do you want to respond?
Nobody will.
Dan Walsh.
Yeah, so...
Okay, Dan.
Dan's got it.
I'll do what I can to address some of the issues. As far as your first concern about the numbers and the different response, it's left up to the individual colleges as to how they did the survey. And since it's not a competitive grant, in other words, that if we show that we had 150 responses or had teams that do it, all they want to know is the method that we did it as opposed to the numbers. So I don't think that's an issue for this report.
Really?
Also, the concern about the timeline for the implementation of that. This is more of a status of here we are now in March, I think it's March 30th. That's when the follow-up report with our plans for the colleges, and that would include the timeline of when things were going to happen. So this is just... Personally, I found this was an interesting thing that we had to do, that here's the status of where we are. We had to get it in by a certain date in order to be qualified to turn in our plan for what we're going to do in March, and that's the one that's going to be tied to the funding for it. I hope that addressed your issues.
Mm-hmm. Again, it was well-done.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve 5.4? We do. Trustee Lang, motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. No further requests to speak. Let's go ahead and vote. 5.4 is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now let's move on to 5.5. Trustee Witt.
Okay, if you look at 5.5 on page one of two, I noticed that the increase in lab fees for the medical assistance program was a lot, $301. I would hope that that department, I mean that they had discussed this with students because that's a lot from zero, or actually, it was before a lot less, and now it's $301. And I just, that caught my eye. Okay, just wanted to share that.
Do you have a question that you want?
Well, the question is that I'm hoping that the...
Just about process?
Yeah, went through the process.
I can get full details on that for you. I do know that there were a number of discussions among the dean and the faculty in that area to assure that these increases were absolutely necessary, but I will get the full details on that particular one, your request, and trustee Witt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on 5.5? We have a motion to move the item, approve it, and a second from trustee Jay. No further questions or discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. 5.5 is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now let's move on to 5.6. Trustee Jay.
Yes, this is on the speakers, and it's for Irvine Valley College, and it's for the president's opening session, the Staff Development Week, and it's Laura Hope, California Community College Chancellor's Office, Guided Pathways, and it's for $5,000. Why so much when she's coming right from the chancellor's office?
That's actually a very good question. We did not know at the time, before she had actually given us a yes, exactly what, you know, she was going to charge for her efforts. And it turns out she only needs travel from the state chancellor's office, so we put a perceived maximum not to exceed in, and so it's going to be much less.
Okay.
And so apparently, the chancellor's office won't pay them for their travel.
Okay, well, that's fine.
So it's just expenses, not an honorarium?
Exactly. There's not an honorarium here, and this, in fact, is extremely important. She's the academic officer in the state chancellor's office that's leading the guided pathways for California, so it'll be an important lecture for us to hear.
Well, I'm thrilled that we've been able to get her, but I thought $5,000 was a lot of money for a speaker.
Good catch.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, trustee Jay. Do we have a motion to approve? We do. Trustee Jay has moved 5.6, second from trustee Lang. Let's go ahead and vote. 5.6 is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Let's move on to 5.9. Trustee Lang.
Yes, this was an item, actually, that I had talked briefly by phone with Dr. Bucy, and unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to talk to him beforehand to see if he had an answer on me. And it had to do with, we were purchasing some electrical equipment. It looks like we accepted the lowest responsible bid on this, and I had no problem with that. But I wasn't sure whether this involved just the purchase of equipment or whether installation costs involved as well, since we were using a New Jersey firm in order to fulfill the contract.
Yes, in most cases, what I found, most cases, installation would be covered, but this is mainly desktop-type things, so it is not a big installation effort on this set of equipment. So the typical approach would be to include installation, and we'll make that clear in the future.
Yeah, I had a question. Just having this item prompted me to think about the building itself, and how are things moving along with the building? When do we expect it to open, and when do we expect student programs to start at the building?
If I can, Jim, I'll jump in on that. As it turns out, as you know, we had planned to open the building in January and have classes up and running. We are kind of at the whim, if I should say that, with the utility companies that need to make that happen. And so one of the issues is with Southern California Edison. They need to be able to hook us up to full-time power. The importance of that is that we cannot get the elevator... The importance of that is that we cannot get the elevator certified and some of the other equipment in the building certified for students until that happens. So we were placed on a schedule that would not allow us to open in January. So the plan is, although they will apparently have this completed about six weeks into the semester, it doesn't help us for a full move, doesn't give us any moving time, certainly. So the plan is, for those classes that are simply sit-down lecture, full lecture classes, we'll move those across the street as soon as we get the certification. So that's six weeks in. And then leaving the lab courses in place, because we need spring break in order to move equipment across and get that ready. So it'll be fully up, we hope. Again, we're based on what the utilities do for the summer session. And so we're planning a full summer session to begin that building.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? 5.9. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee J, second from trustee Witt. Let's go ahead and vote. 5.9 is approved with the unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Now on to 5.10. Trustee Witt.
When I first read this, I didn't, I saw that it started on June 1st, 2017, through May 2020. So I'm thinking already our semester has ended. But I didn't, I didn't notice the equipment will not exceed $80,000. And I wanted to know, did it really start on June 1st, 2017? And we're approving, approving it now to start in January? I was just asking. Does anybody know? Because if so, we need to get a rebate on six months.
Brandy, are you aware?
Trustee Lang.
Look at the item, trustee Witt. It looks like the FCC, FCC Administrative Services Agreement runs through that time period. All we're trying to do is tag along with that contract in order to buy this equipment at a favorable rate.
Okay, I thought it was being purchased. Okay.
And in the recommendation, it does note that it would be during the 2018 year or so.
Yeah. I'm very frugal. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. A motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee J to approve 5.10. Let's vote. I think someone still needs to vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Our last poll is 5.14. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I, I was concerned about this item, because the first one, which was a change order, was extremely close to our $100,000 limit for ratification. And so I was concerned about this being one in possibly a series of change orders that might exceed that limit. And wanna make certain that, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on, on those things.
Yes, and that's one of those markers that you have that my staff does keep an eye on. And this particular one involved the kind of event where you break ground and you find things you didn't anticipate, particularly with water and, and what was underground as they proceeded. They are keeping within the budgeted amount, using some contingency. But otherwise, the project's coming in in good order.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve 5.14? Motion from trustee J, second from trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote. I think we still need a vote. It was. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. It was my mistake. We do have one more item to consider that was pulled. Trustee J, 5.13.
Okay. Is just some, a clarification that I wanted on 5.13. I wanted Capital Outlay Fund. It was, 13 clean energy that IVC, clean energy that Saddleback College is approximately $2 million. I wanted to know exactly what this clean energy is gonna be for? All this money that's spent for clean energy? Capital Outlay Fund.
I'm hoping to defer to associate vice chancellor.
I think we'll have to have Brandy speak to it. These are Prop 39 funds that are geared to energy projects.
I wanted to hear about the energy projects.
Great. So we've been receiving from the state for the past three or four years, Prop 39 funding. And that Prop 39 funding is going toward improvements of the district for energy efficiency projects. So projects that we have done already are lightings at the parking lot. We've changed the, the type of light bulbs that we're using there for greater energy efficiency. And now we're moving into the buildings. And I believe that the Saddleback College and IVC are both doing interior lighting projects for energy efficiency.
Okay.
Okay.
That much money?
Very nice, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're getting, it's from, it's from propositionally, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Brandy.
Welcome.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 5.13? We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee J. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. We are through the consent calendar. All right. Now, moving on to general action item 6.1, acceptance of the district retiree OPEB trust, Saddleback College Foundation, IVC Foundation, ATEP Foundation, and the district foundation annual audits. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee Milchiker. Is there a second? Second from trustee Lang. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Still need a vote. Not sure who's outstanding.
I would suggest you might wanna hear from our outside auditor representative.
Yeah. Absolutely, please. Well, the motion has carried, but please. Let, let, let us, well, we, we did read the attachments.
Trying not to mess anything up here. All right, well, I will give you a quick summary of, of what's in the audit report, because we did have the opportunity to meet with the finance and audit committee. And quite a bit of detail, we went through the district report, the OPEB trust audit report, as well as the four foundation audit reports. So one thing I would like to mention is, I believe within your packet, you would have a letter that is addressed to the board. So this is our required communication to you. And one of the main purposes of this letter is just to bring the audit full circle. So you, as the board, are very aware of any issues, any items that we talk with management about, and we share with them, as well as share with the finance committee. So for all intents and purposes, the letter is a very clean letter. There are some specific areas that are included in the letter in regard to if we had any disagreements, any difficulty performing our audit, if we had any adjustments, anything of that nature. So in all, in all cases, the audit was very smooth. And none of those issues arrived, and there was nothing for us to report back. I will mention that in the body of the letter, there, there were a couple of observations that we made to management. One was related to state compliance and attendance testing in the TBA area. There was also a federal compliance requirement in regard to a date that needs to be uploaded into information reported to the federal government, that we wanted to make sure that, that the date is correct. The feds, of course, would like the date to be exact. And the difference in dates was roughly about five days. So from our, our point of view, it wasn't a material difference. We didn't feel that it was necessary to include a finding within the report. But we did want to document in writing the conversation that we had with management in that regard. The other observation that we had was related to capitalization of fixed assets, and just to have a written policy that, so that it's followed on a consistent basis from year to year. So some very minor items that we, we shared with management. So in regard to the audit report itself, the opinion is a clean or an unmodified opinion. So what that does mean is that the financial statements prepared by management are following all the appropriate accounting policies. And they're also fairly stated based upon GASB requirements. So a huge accomplishment for management to make with an audit report with so much activity, so many moving parts that happen, because it's happening within the district offices, but also at the campuses themselves, play an integral part of putting all of this information together. So a huge accomplishment for, for everyone involved in the process. There were also some new standards that were implemented this year. So there are actually three GASB standards. And two were related to your other post-employment benefit reporting that needed to be implemented. One was implemented a year early, but it made sense to implement the two standards together. And that also related to GASB standard number 84. There is a footnote within the report that talks about more future standards that are coming up in the near future. There's a few that are required the next year, but going out to at least 20, 2020, 2021. So it's an area that is continuing to evolve in the financial reporting area. So you will definitely be seeing changes over the years to your audit report. You know, if I can have you really look at any one page beside the opinion, the page I would like you to, to look at is on page 74 of the report. And it's actually a nice summary. And again, it identifies the type of opinion that we rendered, which is a clean or an unmodified opinion. But then it also goes through, and if we had any, any findings that we needed to report, either an internal control finding or a federal compliance finding, it would be marked on this page. And all of these pages say no. So there were no findings related to those areas. And at the very bottom, it also identifies the district as a low-risk auditi. And so that, again, is a huge accomplishment. That, that is in regard specifically to federal programs. But if you had any material internal control weaknesses, that would preclude you from being a low-risk auditi. So there is that relationship between the overall operations of the district. So I'm happy to answer questions. I believe you have the other audit reports in your packet as well, as far as the OPEB trust and the four foundations. I, I can answer questions if you have specifics on those. Pardon me?
We do have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah, okay. So just to let you know, those are clean opinions as well. And we have also met with the individual finance committees and, and boards and presented the, the audited financial statements for both IVC and for Saddleback College.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Lang.
Yes, so I thought I'd just share a few comments from my perspective as chairman of the audit committee. First of all, I wanted to congratulate our outside audit team. I thought they did a very good job. There, there were certain changes that they suggested that we implement that changed some of the prior balance numbers coming forward for implementation of a particular standard. And, Joe, I thought they did a very thorough job. I probably had less items that I had identified as being, you know, even minor changes in, in going through what I did. So again, congratulations from my perspective. Couple, I, I think the board should spend a little time in taking a look at some of the highlights that are included in these financial statements, because they really do contain some excellent information. And I think probably some of the best information is, is that, that information is developed by our own management team, who I want to acknowledge in just a minute. But they do highlight a lot of the important, I think, financial summaries that are contained in here. And just a few of those that I wanted to point out was the fact that we, we serve over 40,000 students. We have over 3,000 employees in this district. Our assets that were under audit, $750 million. Liabilities were $260 million, of which approximately 180,000 of that represents our, the future pension obligation that we have to retirees. Annual revenues in this district, $321 million. So lots of good information. I encourage you all to study that. The other thing that I wanted to say in my remarks is just to congratulate our own financial team, led at the moment by our vice chancellor, Jim Bucy. Kim, I wanted to acknowledge you for the tremendous job that, that you've done for all these years. And also, our person we mentioned earlier at the beginning of this meeting, Carol Hilton, has done an excellent job in managing the finances for Saddleback College. And I don't know if David Katurian is here from Irvine Valley College, but he also deserves acknowledgement as well. And then finally, I just wanted to mention the, kind of the newest member of the financial team. And I was hoping that you would get up and introduce yourself. We have a new internal auditor in this district who you should know. Please stand and introduce yourself.
Come to the.
I'm Richard Foodlike, I'm the new internal auditor, as trustee Lang mentioned. So I just started in August, so all the hard work was really done by Kim and the rest of the team.
The team, as trustee Lang had mentioned. So I'm just trying to corral the external auditors as much as I can, so.
Yeah. He will be an excellent addition to the team. This is a function that we've, I think, in my opinion, needed for a while, and will make a most valuable contribution in terms of shoring up a lot of our internal financial processes. So we, we're glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiker.
Well, I, I, I really wanna thank the auditors. This is your first year that you're, that you're serving our district, right? And thank you for the good report. And I certainly wanna thank our team, our, first of all, the audit team on the board, the subcommittee of the board, that's the audit team, has done an excellent job. And it, as a board member, it really is, feels, it's, it's most important that we are managing the public trust of the funds that we receive well. And to hear that we, we are managing them so very well is, is just really, means a lot to, to me and the whole board. So I really thank everyone that has been working on the budget. Our vice chancellor of business services and all, all of the people here in, in the audience have been working so hard on it. And just keep, keep up the good work. Keep, keep doing, doing as well as you have been, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have approved the item. And so thank you for your additional comments, and keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So now, let's move on to 6.2, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve this item? We have a motion from, from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Milchiker, and a question from trustee Lang.
Thank you. So a couple of different things. And I guess, Brandy, you're probably gonna be on the hot spot for this one, I, I suspect. I don't know. But it may, may be vice chancellor Bucy as well. I'll have a few questions for. One is, obviously, I'm a little concerned about the, the fact that we're asking for an increase at this stage of the game of 1.9 million with respect to this project. And I think Vice Chancellor Bucy and I had a chance to talk about this beforehand. And I think perhaps a little bit of this might have been avoided with a little bit better planning on the front end of this project with respect to some of these items that are now kind of coming to the forefront. But I also am concerned about the funds that we're tapping into, not just to pay for the, the project, which we've already approved, but also any overages that now we, we may come up with with respect to any enhancements with the project. So I'd like to maybe hear a little bit more about that. Maybe you could repeat some of the discussion that we had for the benefit of the entire board.
Okay, a lot of this, there are actually five different items mentioned as part of the change order. Much of it, much of the cost we're talking about here involves changing from asphalt to pavement, or by asphalt pavement to. to pavement, asphalt pavement to concrete. Subsequent to the initial decision to go with asphalt, it was determined that it would be better in terms of maintenance and durability down the line to go with concrete, which is more of a best practice. And so I think it was a wise decision, a wise choice to make. And as we talked, trustee Lang and I earlier today, what we do in the facilities area is look at projects in the rearview mirror also to check, you know, how did our planning process go? How did, you know, each phase, design, construction, through post-occupancy. And occasionally you see an item come forward to the board, asking for funds to go back in and do some kind of, for lack of a better term, tweaking on a facility. Because once you get people in there, sometimes you find it didn't operate quite like you thought, or they didn't operate quite like you thought. So each phase gets put under a little bit of a microscope, could we have done better? And this project will be subject to that same thing later on. There is one item, a water quality issue that was added in. That's really stemming out of some more recent legislation that dealing with wastewater. And this seemed like an advisable thing to add in here and into this particular project. So again, in some, I think it was a wise choice that was made between the college and the district. And I think in the long run, what you don't want is to be so tight on budget that you come in later and just all you did is increase the maintenance side of the equation. So in terms of the reserves, these are coming, I believe it's out of redevelopment funds, if memory serves.
Yes, that's correct.
And that was a, an arrangement that was made in order to go forward with this. I'm not sure, Kim or Brandy, can either of you speak to that way that occurred?
I guess what I'm interested is what do we have in available redevelopment funds to be able to spend on this and other projects, if anybody knows?
Mary Opal, I think, maybe has the answer to that.
I'll actually cover that for you. So the original project, Basic Aid, contributed 64% of the project budget. And the college allocation, the redevelopment fees, was 36%. So based on the original contract value, which was just shy of 49 million, if you assume a 10% contingency, the redevelopment would be 1.7 million. So there's sufficient in the project, all coming from the redevelopment, to cover it.
What do we have, though, in available redevelopment funds for this and other projects? Do we know?
Well, basically, for this project, you agreed to contribute 20, just a little over $22 million for this particular project alone. So that money has already been allocated to this project and is within this, no matter what.
I get that. I think Kim is maybe going to answer my question here.
At the time, Saddleback had two different resources to use on top of the Basic Aid. They had the redevelopment and the money that's been set aside for the promenade. And so they used all of their redevelopment money that we had allocated and a small portion of their promenade funds. They still have quite a large pot of promenade funds available to them if they need it.
What about, what about future redevelopment funds?
There is additional redevelopment funds that come in every year. We haven't allocated anymore. We did one allocation last year and we haven't allocated anymore yet. But there are still several million dollars that are there to allocate if we do that.
Okay.
So they have sufficient resources to cover the change.
Yeah, that I wasn't worried about. I'm just trying to get a sense of what that flow of available funds really is for future use.
The promenade is over 2 million a year.
Okay.
Trustee Prendergast.
A lot of what I was going to ask was just dealt with. I guess the only other thing that wasn't really touched on is the turf field change. Again, you know, we support this project and we, if I remember right, I thought it was, you know, $62 million. So to see it's going up to 50 is, I guess, good news. But it's still, I mean, it was mentioned, you know. Why wasn't it thought of before that we would want turf field instead of grass? And I imagine it was because they wanted to keep the budget down. So I'm kind of getting to the question, you know, chicken or the egg? Was it, hey, we have these redevelopment funds, you can spend it on this, you know, find something to spend it on? Or was it, this is long-term better for maintenance and, you know, where, how are we going to pay for this? Let's go find a way? I just kind of want to get some clarification on the process on this because, you know, that was a big, big pull for everyone involved.
Yeah, and you and I are going in the same place here. We don't want to be nickel and dimed continuously for additional increases to this project, you know, down the road.
And we don't expect that that will happen. During the design process, we work on a, I think, first, let me say that I think Dr. Byce did a really good job of talking about how we consider maintenance. One of the things that we really wanted to consider relative to these particular projects was the long-term investment in these projects to ensure that things like asphalt is going to break down a lot faster than concrete. Or relative to your specific question on the turf versus the natural grass, that, so the playing field is turf, the astroturf. And there's a practice field that was natural grass. And there was a concern that if they were practicing on a different field than they were playing on, it wouldn't have that same consistency. So they desired all along that they would like to have this astroturf. But when we get to the bottom line, and it was 62 million on this project, the 50 that you see is specific to the construction cost. And then there's other soft costs and testing and those kinds of things applied to that project budget. So we got to the bottom line on the project that was allowable for the construction cost. And we had items that had been identified through the course of the design. One of the beauties about design-build is we can identify, here's what we wish we could do. And then we can start playing with the budget and saying, here's other things absolutely that need to go in, here's our needs. And then there's a few wants that are left over, let's work those in. And then we have this list over here that still has more things on it, which did include the asphalt, concrete, or asphalt to concrete, and then regular turf to the astroturf. So those things were still out there. And the coaches really made a strong play for, please, can we add these to the project? And so if we were going to do that, how are we going to do that? In the long run, the addition will make for a better project. I hope that's answered your question.
I don't doubt that. Having, having gold plating on the roofing might make for a better project. But I, I mean, I totally get the turf thing. If you're practicing on grass and then you're playing on turf, it's like going from running on a track to running on sand. I get that. And, but again, if that was a want in the beginning, and it wasn't put in in the beginning because they thought we'd balk on it, it's a concern. I'm not saying I'm going to vote no against it. I'm just, again, I think it's just a matter of, you know, we have lots of these, one of the nice things about the design-build that was sold, along with lease, leaseback and all that, is you have less change orders.
Correct.
Now we're getting change orders. So it's, it makes, it just gets, I don't think I'm the only one that's having a little heartburn on it.
I appreciate that.
No, I know, Dr. Anderson wants to say a few words, but, I mean, I agree with trustee Prendergast's comments. I was really surprised to see these change orders in here. I mean, I, Kim, I realize we have the resources. I understand that. But when I looked at these items, I mean, I was really shocked they weren't considered in the first place. I used to work in the ready concrete industry back in the 90s. I could have told you, you should have chosen concrete over asphalt. I mean, and I've been in the industry for 20 years. I mean, I guess it's really disappointing that these weren't, these items were not considered in the first place. And I was really surprised to see this come up. Dr. Anderson.
Board president Jamal and trustee Prendergast, trustee Lang, your comments are very well taken by this president, this administration. I have no ability right now to state with any authority on what has transpired, but I can state that I'll investigate further and provide any additional documentation subsequent to the vote, as helpful as that is. More than that, though, I can assure you that every time in the future when I am involved in these decisions, I'll make sure that I have all the details. And you can, you can take that to the bank. In the meantime, our, one of our faculty members at this table can, can provide his experience, having served on the committee that was involved with that, Professor Bresch.
Yeah, to speak to what you said about not being considered at the beginning, I was on the original design team that worked with the criteria architects. In both of those items, the concrete and the astroturf, it wasn't for the entire piece for the astroturf, that was just for a section that was on the north end of the practice fields. Not only were those identified, they were requested. And at some point between all the design meetings that we'd had where we said this all needed to be concrete and this needed to be astroturf, somehow the criteria architects did not write the RFP in a way that was specific enough that the actual architects who were awarded the project caught that and it didn't come through. And at some point, those of us that were in that design phase were sort of kept away from some of the processes. We didn't, we didn't pick up on that until after it was and when we questioned it. And that's why Mary and the rest of her staff kind of have worked hard to get this put back in. But it wasn't that it wasn't designed from, it was from first day, that we never had any intention to be anything other than concrete or any other than artificial turf.
So this, you were surprised by this?
Surprised wouldn't be the word I would use, but I think it's the one we can use here. Yeah. It came as something of a shock that it was, we looked at it and said, what does this mean? When they used other terms, it was a concrete asphalt. We're like, which is it, concrete or asphalt? And we were like, because it's supposed to be concrete, it's supposed to be everything under the stadium and around. Because we have evidence in our stadium now, where you look at asphalt that was put in in 2009, when the track that's there actually is deteriorating and crumbling away from the track. And we never had any intent of that being in there.
So I'm a little confused where it broke down, but I appreciate you stepping in here. Trustee Lang.
So I guess the only question that I would have would be, are we aware of anything else at this point that you're likely to bring to the board relative to this project that would increase the project cost?
We don't expect that there will be another increase to this project. We're still in the design process. And as we moved forward DSA, we consider the plans complete. Could there be changes? Absolutely. This is a, a lot of the project is going to be underground. And until we get out of the ground, it's going to be unforeseen circumstances and that could happen. But relative to other design aspects of the project, we don't expect to have any more of those come forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think what you're seeing is a board that, I think I speak for most of us, that are very supportive of this project from the beginning. And because where it started was the foundation was paying for 100% of this. And then we spent years trying to figure out how the foundation was going to pay for it. And we come to the realization that we should have in the first place that the foundation can't do that. And so then the board stepped in and, I think rightly, made this a priority. And so that's why it's not just that, for me, that, yeah, clearly, I think these things should have been caught in the beginning. It's just the evolution of this. I mean, there's still strong support. It's just, you know, I think trustee Lang's question is right. We know there's going to be change orders, but hopefully not of the kind that should have been caught in the beginning, that arose during the process that we didn't foresee.
Understood.
So that's my, my take on it. Any other, other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item is approved with the unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.3, ATEP First Building Project Change Order. Another change order. And this is to, with McCarthy Building Companies. It's our motion to approve the item. Motion from trustee Prendergast. And I think a second from trustee Milchik. Do we have any questions on 6.3? Trustee Lang.
Pretty much similar discussion to the previous item. And that is just a little further explanation regarding the detail. Again, vice chancellor Bucy and I talked a little bit about this item. I think he's got some detail for what's involved with some of these changes. I think that's important that the rest of the board hear what I heard.
Several components of this change order deal with access control. And it's my understanding that a certain vendor was looked at to provide keyless access during the planning phase, but then later instituted some kind of a annual maintenance fee that was pricey and that that was seen as not a wise decision. Planning continued on and it took a while to find out what vendor to, that could provide the access system that they wanted. And so, you know, this one, it's not that they hadn't seen it upfront, they had been planning on it, but there was a change in the dynamic. And so this is the end result of that. And then the temporary generator is due to the delay in, and that's about roughly almost a third of the total, the same delay with Southern Cal Edison that's caused us to move the project back. So those are the pieces of this particular change order.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on 6.3. The item is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.4. The update of authorized signature list of Board of Trustees Designees to approve documents and contracts. A motion approved from trustee Milchik, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.5, Board Policy Revision on Shower Facilities for Homeless Students. Have a motion to improve the item, trustee Milchik, a second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Board president, are you on, you're on 6.5? Am I in the right place here?
You guys have got two items.
Yeah, there's two items. It's the shower facilities and also Board Policy 3009.
Correct.
Internal audit. And I would like to note that the, what they call B-Park, the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Committee, did recommend a change in the internal audit item on the proposed Policy 3009 Internal Audit. And in the authority, which is about halfway down in that particular paragraph, it says the internal auditor is authorized unlimited access to all district records. The committee recommends taking out the word unlimited. So that would be a proposed change.
Does it make any difference? If there's access, there's access.
May I add? As our union president so pointedly said, unlimited could mean they go to their house. And if they don't have a laptop at their house, their unlimited is just so expansive that the conversation by the committee was that access was sufficient.
I agree. I don't see any, really many changes, but that's fine. Trustee Lang.
Just want to point out that this is bringing, being brought to the board for review and study. So this, there still can be changes before this comes to the board for final approval. And that would, it would be appropriate to make those kinds of changes in the final policy when it comes forward.
You can say one.
Yeah, I think, because we haven't voted yet, have the vote pending. Who has, do you have questions?
I had another, at one point, we were discussing, when we approved the board policies, having the administrative regulations in place as well, so we could at least look at them. We'd be voting on the board policy, but I'm not going to the mat for that, but I'm just wondering where that is right now.
Can you, so can you say, you say that again?
Well, well, at one point, I recall that we were discussing, because what we want is the board policies to be just concise and just tell the policy and not be very prescriptive. And then the administrative regs to be prescriptive so that to tell the administrators how to facilitate the board policy. So at one point, we discussed having in our agenda the board policy and the administrative regulation.
You want the accompanying. You want the accompanying AR to go just be in here as a matter of information?
Yeah, if possible, so.
So maybe for future, okay, go ahead, trustee Lang.
Yeah. I think it's impractical, frankly, to believe that the administrative regulations will be fully developed by the time we get the broader board policy. And so it's been typical that those administrative regulations would, would follow on the heels of, of board policy, because it takes a little bit more time to develop, again, those more prescriptive regulations. I think the concern would be, and I think it's a good one, trustee Milchacher, that we don't want to wait too long to have those administrative regulations in place. And there shouldn't be a, a large lapse of time between those two. But I, I do think it's impractical to have both at the same time.
Yeah, well, okay, I'll, I'll go along with that. I'll let other people speak first. But for instance, it's a state law now that we have to have showers for homeless people. Well, how do we implement that? That's, that's where it gets, we have to really decide how this is implemented. But, but if we need to, to vote on the policies first and the administrative regulations aren't developed yet, that would be fine.
I just want to piggyback on that in that when, when we get the AR, then it's helpful to have the board policy tied with it in the agenda. But I, I think the other way around is, is impractical, if I remember right, from when we talked about this before. And I just wanted to again thank, I know it's state law and all, but to be in compliance on, on the shower facilities and to have one small, nice thing we can do. And it's not just for the homeless students, it's also for our other students that, you know, it, it makes a better environment for everyone in the educational arena. So thank you.
Great.
I would note that regulations have been prepared in these, for these items, and have been to the committee already, so.
They have been prepared?
Yeah.
So would it be?
Oftentimes, you might have to delay and get the policy in before you can get the, the regulations in. But in this instance, the regulations are.
Well, the policy should come first. And that's the way, I think trustee Lang is correct, that the policy should come first. And then the ARs follow the policy because you're prescribing how to implement the policy.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, but, but if the administrative regulations are already prepared, like they are in this case, would it be a lot more work to, to put it in the agenda item, the board policy and the administrative regulations?
We can have them available for the next meeting and so that you can see those in advance of taking action on the policy.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee approval and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Moving on to 6.6. Allocation for Conversion to Canvas Learning Management System. Faculty conversion to Canvas one-time stipends. Have a motion to approve the item. A motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Milchacher, and a request to speak from trustee Lang.
Yes, I, as you know, I feel very strongly about this item and will be voting against this item. I think I expressed the strong opinions that I had the last, so I don't want to spend the time to repeat that, but just to highlight a couple of points. And that is, for one thing, I'm not in favor of separating both the, the funding source and the item itself, that being 6.7. I think, as I mentioned before, this should have been a bargaining item that came to the board for direction and subsequent approval. Process was not followed and was not legitimate, in my opinion. I think, again, it's an intrinsic part of the faculty's current responsibility, shouldn't qualify for separate stipend, in my opinion. I think it's out of proportion with what, what other districts are receiving in that regard. And I think, you know, again, our, our Board of Trustees should not be a rubber stamp board, but needs to do what's right in representing our constituency out in the community, in my opinion. And, you know, again, if you look at the cost of this item, look at the other items that are included in 6.8 on a cumulative basis, you're talking about $5 million in additional compensation items. It's just too much, in my opinion, and I intend to oppose it.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Prendergast.
So conversely, I am planning to vote yes on this item. I, I do feel like I need to make a couple of statements based on process and just concerns as far as things that have been said, things that have been done. The, the amount of the stipend, you know, I compare it to other stipends. I think the key difference here, you know, we've been accused of meddling and not, you know, taking into account that other stipends don't get negotiated. I think the key difference here for, for myself and other members on the board was more the process than the, the concept of stipends. But on that note, the stipends that aren't being discussed and aren't being negotiated are done and basically part of the college budgets. And they're done by the college and they're approved by the college. And this one was different in that it was asking for the district to pay for something using basic aid funds. And I think that was the, the heartburn that many people had, if I may speak for, on that behalf. And I think, you know, we've taken some criticism for pulling the motion, but in the end, I think it was in order to make sure it was, was done better. And I think we've done that. And by splitting the, the, the funding allocation would help that be more bearable, so to speak. You know, I look at the stipend amount and, you know, yes, we've heard that the other districts, you know, $500, $400, a lot of them, none. So it is a lot higher. I look at the, the amount, you know, I did some calculations on my coaching stipend. I put in over 300 hours on just practice alone and I get $2,500. So I think, I mean, it's not comparable from K through 12 to, to what have you, but I think that's part of the issue, is it was a lot of money and where it was coming from. But I am going to vote yes on it. It was a promise made and we're going to, I hope, keep the promise. I do have another concern of, you know, just in hindsight and, you know, tonight is a great example of the function of this table up here is for advice and reporting. I don't think it's a proper place to be a bully pulpit to threaten this board and putting students hostage for threatening to not do things if we don't give money. And it set a dangerous precedent. And this is a privilege, not a right. There are plenty of boards that don't allow representative groups at the front table or even to speak unless they use public comments. And it threatens that relationship and that invitation. And I think that should be something that's considered in the future.
Thank you, trustee Prendergast. If my colleagues will indulge me, I do have a number of questions I want to ask on this item. So I apologize in advance. And I'm going to ask the administration to respond to them. My first question is, how does this proposed stipend amount compare with what other districts have offered for similar conversions from Blackboard to Canvas?
Board President, I have some research on that. Put a, an email out to the listserv for human resource, chief human resource officers, and here's what I received back. The majority of districts did not respond. Santa Monica Community College District, Santa Clarita Community College District, Long Beach City College, North Orange County Community College District, El Camino, West Hills, San Diego Community College District, Barstow, Ventura, and Rancho Santiago Community College District all pay nothing in, with respect to the Canvas conversion. Contra Costa came back with a 2.5% off schedule payment to faculty for the conversion. Imperial Valley paid $300 per unit. If you look at a 7.5 LAG, that would be $2,250. The Coast Community College District, $400 flat fee for the training and the creation of a Canvas shell. Foothill DeAnza paid a maximum one-time payment of 1,500. And Lake Tahoe Community College District paid each faculty .72 LAG as a stipend.
Thank you for that. My second question is, the board has been told that IVC decided to transition from Blackboard to Canvas in the fall of 2016, while Saddleback decided to make the transition in the fall of 2017. Why is there a difference of one year? And what process was used to adopt the policy to make the transition? And which stakeholders
Let me try to remember the sequencing. But the way that I recall it is that, beginning with, Saddleback started to consider Canvas, I believe, first. And through their work at some point, decided to pull back from that. This is best of my recollection. At that point, then IVC became interested and began to work on a pilot. And so at that time, our technologist, Joe San Juan, began to transition courses over to Canvas so that the faculty could try it out and compare it with Blackboard. So what I have learned in talking directly with Joe, and this is a quote from Joe, but that he has transitioned most, if not all, of the courses himself. And if, if the course was well-designed in Blackboard, then it would take him an hour to, to move it over. And if it was poorly designed in Blackboard, he spent up to 10 hours for that conversion.
Okay. Sure, go ahead, TJ.
What would be the difference in the design? Is it the way the documents are loaded? Is it the way they're configured? I mean, knowing LMSs myself, there's, there's certain ways as you can do things. But ultimately, if you're loading, say, Word documents versus Google Docs versus Pages from Mac or what have you, they should convert regardless of the platform you're using. But, so is it, they're putting it into a Blackboard application file versus an attachment? Is that the, the holdup?
You know, that's a very good question. Not having used Blackboard myself, or Canvas for that matter, I can only read into what Joe San Juan might have been referring to. But this, of course, is the conversion from a Blackboard environment. And so what he conveyed to me, it would be files that may not be, or be scattered in the way that they're located within different bins within this. And so it's a matter of organization or structure of information, again, reading into what Joe was telling me, that if it was packaged well, it would slip right over. But he would go through the effort of redesigning that architecture in Canvas. And if he did that, it would be a 10-hour effort. Again, just to the best of my knowledge, I'm stretching it here a little bit.
Okay. Saddleback College, any comments? Yes, sir.
The only way that it would take less than 10 hours to convert from Blackboard to Canvas would be if it was a, there's different levels you can use in LMS. One would be like the way I use it, is that it's just simply, here's the files that are available for my classroom, as opposed to discussion boards and all the other interaction that were required by law for the online courses. Even a well-structured one is probably going to take more than 10 hours. The problem, what we run into is the ones who, as far as the timing, it's the Canvas and Blackboard, the way they're structured as far as how each module is constructed, that even, it's, it may one run wonderful in Blackboard. But that format doesn't line up with how Canvas does it. Unfortunately, that's not my area of expertise. If this would have been, if I knew in advance, we could have had our online education committee people here to explain some of the differences. I'm not trying to discount Dr. Rockmore, but anybody I know who's been using it and converting it, the only people where it's gone very quickly were using Blackboard at its most basic, simple level and not some of our power users of Blackboard. Also, as far as the, the procedure at Saddleback, we had a committee that looked at the difference between Canvas and Blackboard. We put a vote out to those who were using Blackboard. There was a lot of reluctance on faculty from switching for Blackboard, because Blackboard was working well and we all knew that it was going to be a lot of work to convert. The justification for it was part of the online education initiative that we would get additional resources to use at the college for free or at no cost. And including Canvas for free and no cost, that was part of the decision-making process, that it wasn't just, what do you like better, Canvas or Blackboard? It was, do you want to be part of the online education initiative? Do you want these additional resources? Do you want to get the LMS for free? Because I may get the pricing wrong, but I believe it was in the $800,000 to $900,000 a year for Blackboard as opposed to Canvas for free. So all of that was, was part of it, not just, we want to go from Canvas to the other. Because if, if that was it, it wouldn't have gone anywhere. We immediately would have said no, but it was part of a bigger package of things that often gets left out in some of these discussions. I know I alluded to it last time. But the delay for Saddleback, why there was a year lag, was that we did send it out to subcommittees of the academic senate before we made the decision on it.
Okay, two more questions. Participation in the online education initiative of the state chancellor's office is supposed to grant the South Orange County Community College District partially free access to Canvas for the first four years. How much money and savings to the district would occur by discontinuing Blackboard and only using Canvas?
Board President Jamal, my office administers the Blackboard contract through the colleges. And looking over the last contract, the contract includes both LMS and non-LMS related items. When you take out the non-LMS related items, such as the emergency messaging component, the costs are approximately $300,000 per year. So if we were to save for two years, for example, the maximum cost savings would be $600,000.
Okay, thank you. My last question was, and I'm still a little unclear about who would oversee the supervision and implementation of the conversion for each discipline. Could the administration elaborate on this?
The actual conversion of every course depends on the faculty member who's taking lead responsibility for that course. And within each department, there are various faculty members who take the lead. And even within each course, there are faculty members who have subspecialties within that. The overall guidance for that does come from the, what is the name of our committee?
The Online Education.
Online Education Committee, which consists primarily of faculty members with a strong capacity and, and leadership in online education.
Glenn or June?
You know, I think I will defer to our academic senate president, because she can speak to the online committee that we have.
At IVC, it was Online Education Task Force that oversaw, it was not a subcommittee of the senate. They introduced it, they held trainings. Academic senate voted to move over to Canvas. I can, if you want the date when that, that vote was, we have that. I don't have it off the top of my head. And then the Online Education Task Force set up inside IVC site and trainings and spread that out to all the faculty who then began to, to move over.
Okay, so I guess to, I'm sorry, I apologize for all the questions.
It's okay.
The way I, the way I am seeing this is that this is a process that was not followed the way it should have gone. This was not a process authorized by, by the board. The administration's engaged in discussions which were tantamount to negotiations and resulted in offers and counters, counteroffers. Information the board discovered very late in the process in October. And, you know, it's unfortunate that it has unfolded in this manner. What you just heard, I don't think there's any question about it, that these are, unless we come with subsequent information, by far the largest stipends in the state of California for this conversion. And, and, you know, I think this is, this is a, if we approve this, it's a non-precedent setting move. It was not appropriate to be considered under basic aid. I think it was debatable whether this qualifies as an eligible activity under basic aid. Perhaps you can make an argument under the technology initiative, I'm not sure. I don't think it was ever construed to be considered for a faculty stipend. So I'm very disappointed. I'm not. I'm not looking at you, you weren't here. This was not negotiated in a way that it should have been. I, I think that it's totally clear that this board is very supportive of faculty, myself personally. Faculty are amazing in our district, and I think that you know that, you hear that from us. And I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm very disappointed that the board has been put in a position to have to make decisions like this on a process that was flawed. It may not have been legitimate. It's now under a, a change of an allocation away from basic aid, which is some benefit in the future. If this ever comes up again, even though it's a one-time, non-precedent-setting move, should be, come from the college budgets because it seems that that's probably an appropriate place for it. So I'll turn it over to Trustee Lang. Oh, no, Trustee Witt hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
I don't think your question was answered when you asked, how is this going to be supervised?
Or how? Why don't I just let it go?
I, I, I saw that. But I just wanted to share with you, when I heard about it, I did ask our former chancellor and I said, how will this be evaluated when, when faculty implement this? And I haven't read it here, maybe I missed it, but she said that the class had to be taught a semester before the payment would be, the stipend would be awarded, and is that true? I mean, you convert and then you teach, and then it's approved by the dean? At first I thought the district was going to handle it, and that can't be, but somebody has to approve it. And so is that the way you guys had decided on it? I just wanted to know, that it would be taught before it would be paid for?
I'm sorry, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that was the agreement at IBC. My recollection was that, that, that was not what was told to faculty. I, I don't know what agreement you're referring to.
Okay, but you can understand, when she told me that, I thought, oh, that's great. Can you imagine us paying for someone converting a class and never using it? It has to be implemented.
Of course.
Yes, so it would be wise then to implement it and then get paid.
For sure. And, and at IBC, we're, we're converted as of, as of January, so.
Did I answer your question?
No, it's still not fully answered, but.
Board President Jamal, I think that one of the challenges that the college presidents are facing is perhaps, well, I, just to, to set risk of speaking out of turn, I will say that neither of these college presidents were involved in the direct negotiations regarding this.
Neither were we.
I understand.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna, can I, I need a motion to extend the meeting, if someone could do that, please.
So we'll extend the meeting till?
Well, we've got more requests to speak. Oh, no, no, there are other requests to, so, but we need to extend the meeting anyway.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Milchek to extend it till when?
Nine thirty?
Till nine thirty, a second from Trustee Witt. Can we just do a verbal?
Verbal.
Okay, all those in favor, or the motion from, well, here we go. Motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Jade, extend the meeting to nine thirty. Motion approved by unanimous trustee yes vote, student trustee yes vote. I know you wanted to speak too, Student Trustee Larson. Can he go before you since he didn't spoken? Student Trustee Larson?
Yeah, just from a, a student perspective, I think the Canvas program is a lot more effective in engaging students with the online education programs. It's essentially Blackboard 2.0. The students really like it, as well as myself. I've used it this semester and it really is a positive for the students.
Don't disagree with that, thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that, that I think Canvas is certainly the way to go. I also agree with the notion that we have a high level of respect for our faculty in this district and appreciate the jobs that they do. I don't think that any of that has to do with this item in particular. I think the, the, one of the facts that both trustees, Jamal and Prendergast, may hit on was, there may have been a promise made, but it wasn't made by this board. It wasn't direction that was provided by this board, and this is coming to this board for approval. So it's up to us to make the hard decision. Let me also disabuse several of you of the notion of where the funding of, of this is coming from. It is coming from basic aid. So here's how that works. And I'm sorry to get into 6.7 a little bit, but I think it's important that we talk about that. There are basically three separate contingency accounts in this district. There's the District Reserve for Unrealized Tax Collections, I should say really for. There is the District Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, that's really the contingency account that we're talking about here. And then there are also two separate economic uncertainty reserves, one at Saddleback College and one at Irvine Valley College. The one at Saddleback College, in our report is roughly, well, in, in the most recent report that's in your board agenda, is $2.5 million. IBC's Economic Uncertainty Account has only roughly about $300,000 in it. Clearly not enough to pay for this initiative. What happens when the money comes out of our Reserve for Economic Uncertainties is that when we get to the end of our fiscal year, we will replenish those reserves at seven and a half percent. Where do you think that money is going to come from? It comes out of basic aid. So whether you're, you know, you, you can shuffle the, the board as much as you want to, the bottom line is, is that if you approve this item, it's going to come out of basic aid. That is not an appropriate use of basic aid. Each of us should respect the, the fact that we have certain criteria for what the, the use of that basic aid is and should oppose this item. So again, I want to voice how strongly I feel that this is not an appropriate item for this board to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments, questions on the item? No requests to speak, all right. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, don't we have a motion in a second? I thought we did. Oh. We have a, the motion carries on a five to one trustee vote, one trustee abstention, and a student trustee no vote. All right, so let's move on to six point seven, yeah, 6.7 budget transfer from the Reserve for Contingencies for the Canvas stipends. So a motion to approve the item. Some motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchek. Any requests to speak? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of tail on trustee Lang's, yes, I don't, I don't think we were under the illusion that it wasn't going to come from basic aid at some point. I think the idea though, you know, is that we're not directly drawing it from basic aid at that time to where it, again, the, the issue was the legality of breaking board policy directly versus, you know, kicking it down to the next budget year where the overflow comes in. And I do want to thank Acting Chancellor Fallow for making that recommendation so that those of us who wanted to vote for this all along but were upset with that aspect of it could give it new consideration. And, and, and I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Any other questions or comments, I should say? Trustee Witt.
I would love for that to say up to 3.679421, up to. Because I know that's what we're putting it at, but everybody says it's up to.
So can I amend your question a little bit? Because I, I've asked and no one will give me an answer. What is, I've been, I've been told by the former interim chancellor and by the new administration, I'm not blaming you, I'm just, that this is nowhere near the actual number. What is going to be the actual number? Can someone, anyone in this room give me some estimate within $100,000? Why are you shaking your head? No? No? We have no idea?
I can only say that the, if I may, I can only say that the estimates I've heard are between 2.4 and, and the 3.7. And until we pay it, we won't know it precisely. And so that's not $100,000.
No. And, sorry, I usurped your time.
No, what, what I'm thinking is you look at how many online classes we have now with Blackboard, multiply that, because those are online. But I do want to say just one little thing, I, because being faculty, I think there's a little discrimination on those that have used Blackboard to its fullest, but were not online. If you would have attended any one of my courses, I used all the modules, I did everything. The only thing I didn't do was put it online. And so now those that have a full class that will be converted to Canvas but not online miss out. That's, obviously would have cost more, but that's my take on it. I, I look, I look at all the faculty that put as much work into it. And by the way, I went over to the, it used to be Citi, what's it called now? The Student Force, Faculty for Student Success? And I want to tell you, board members, it's going to take hours for people who have used Blackboard but haven't for all this time, but they haven't used, they haven't been exposed to, to Canvas. It's going to take a while. It would take me a while. Blackboard didn't come easy for me, but the second course I did third one, it wasn't a problem at all. But it's going to take a while. There was, there was a faculty member in there, she spent over 40 hours already in there because she wanted it perfect. Not, well, she did, she cares about the students. She used all the modules. So I do believe that it's, that it is a lot of work, and I just would like to see it up to. And if, if faculty could take the number of classes that are taught at IBC and at Saddleback and give us an estimate, that would be great. No?
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I, I think the, one of the other aspects of this and, and the consternation we're having on the number is, is getting a full understanding that, or at least my take on it is, is that we're converting from Blackboard to Canvas, that the savings comes from eventually getting rid of Blackboard. So if someone's using Blackboard now, they pretty much have to convert to Canvas. Don't we know that number?
Just, if I should answer, she answered that question.
But, but, no, 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 I'm not talking about the dollar amount, I'm talking about the number of faculty that use Blackboard now. We know that number.
Right.
So it should be possible to make this calculation closer than what we're given, it would, I would think. Now, I'm not asking for it tonight, but I'm just, I think.
While we asked for it two months ago, why not wait another month?
I don't know, but. I, I do agree that, that, that the number is not going to be attained, we hope, but at the same time, you know, you know, the adding of the words up to don't affect anything, they don't hurt anything, so I don't see why we wouldn't do it. But I, obviously, in hindsight, we should have put it on the last item as well.
All right, so with the, with the risk of getting redundant, because we're talking about this issue again, no, well, I just, no, there's some issues that have come up. I think Trustee Witt, no, no one's arguing that it takes some time. We all, we all agree it takes time to do the conversion. Second, we all know that this board is very supportive of the, the faculty. Third, we know now the process was violated and not followed like it should have been and resulted in a, was tantamount to a negotiation in an offer and a counteroffer, which is the reason why we're in this position. Because we are now being told that this was a negotiation unauthorized, but nevertheless a negotiation, that moved ahead. And, and we now have data based on questions that I asked, that as far as I can see, so everyone is clear, it appears that this is, these are by far the highest stipends in the, in the state of California that will be offered for this, with this kind of conversion. I, I just, going into this, unless there's some data following up to this meeting, I'd love to see it, other districts that are paying this amount, that would be nice to see. But it's, it's clear we're going into this, these items with, with those facts in hand.
Point of order, we're not voting on that concept anymore, we're voting on where the money's going to come from.
Okay, but we're, we're talking.
So we've already voted to approve it, now we need to figure out how to fund it.
Well, I agree. So let's go, any other comments or questions?
No more comments.
Okay.
It doesn't say, there's no, okay. Oh, thank you.
The motion carries for a five to one trustee yes vote, one trustee abstention, and student advisory no vote. All right. We are now on to item 6.8, and I think Vice Chancellor Viska-Chill has an update.
Yes, Board President, Board Members, thank you. In accordance with Brown Act, Government Code Section 54953, prior to taking final action, we are required to, to provide an oral summary related to the terms of contracts for educational administrators. There's a number going forward for you tonight on page six of seven, and I want to give you the oral summary as quickly as I can. For Christian Alvarado, Dean of Enrollment Services at Saddleback, his annualized salary is $167,172. His contract will end June 30, 2019, it's a one-year contract. Marina Ameny, Dean, Online Education, Learning Resources, Saddleback College, annualized salary 184,296. The contract ends June 30, 2020, it's a two-year contract. Juan Avalos, Vice President, Student Services, annualized salary 235,236. Term of the contract, three years, ending June 30, 2021. Tracy Fahimi, Dean, Social and Business Behavioral Sciences at IBC, annualized salary Term of the contract, two years, ending June 30, 2020. Georgina Guy, Dean, Student Equity and Special Programs, Saddleback College, annualized salary 184,296. Two-year contract ending 6/30/2020. Nancy Montgomery, Director, Health and Wellness, IBC, 175,536 annualized salary. Two-year contract ending 6/30/2020. Akira Nida, Dean, Math, Science Engineering, Saddleback College, annualized salary 159,204. Two-year contract ending June 30, 2020. Dan Prito, Assistant Dean, Division, Director Emeritus, Saddleback College, annualized salary 137,544. Two-year contract ending June 30, 2020. Penny Scaff, Dean of Counseling Services, Saddleback College, annualized salary 159,204. Two-year contract ending June 30, 2020. Leanna Zhao, Dean, Math, Science Engineering, IBC, annualized salary 203,196. Two-year contract ending 6/30/2020. And there's one other item, item G, Winnie Johnson, that's a temporary contract, annualized salary 203,196. It's a temporary contract through June 30, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve 6.8, second from trustee Prendergast, any, I had a, I had a question. Maybe I read it incorrectly, I, stipend seems to be the topic of the evening. I, I think I saw that Saddleback College had $280,000 in stipends from the general fund. Maybe I read it incorrectly, half the total amount for the entire year in, in one month? Is that, am I not reading this correctly? And so, thank you. And I, what is the reason for the large spike in stipends during the past month totaling half the amount for the year?
I am going to see if I can defer to.
I am going to see if I can defer to either of my vice presidents or in the room on this. All of these.
Okay, oh, turn on your mic.
Covered by these stipends is from January 9th to May 24th.
Oh, I see, okay.
Thank you, trustee Lang, for bailing me out.
For the $280,000, okay. All right.
Nearly half the year, but.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right, any other questions? Someone hasn't voted, I don't know who. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now on to six point nine, Classified Personnel Actions. Is there a motion to move the item?
Any changes to the item first?
Oh, any, any, any changes to the item? No changes. All right. We have a motion from trustee Milchuker, and a second from trustee Prendergast. Any further comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Six point nine is approved with a unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, last general action item, and we already approved it, thanks to trustee Lang moving up in the order. Now we'll move on to reports. Staff list of board request reports, status of board requested reports. Seven point two, staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. Seven point three, Saddleback College and IVC speakers. Seven point four, facilities plan status report. Trustee Lang.
It looked like, I'm sure this is going to be for you, Brandy. It looked like there were a couple of items on here that were, looked like they were completed in terms of DSA closeout, but we continue to carry. One was ATEP demolition, another was, another was, oh, that was page, I'm sorry, page nine of 14. And then I've got 12 of 14. There were two items on there also that looked like we had done either final plans or final reports. So I'm wondering what, what, what else is going to happen that would cause us to continue to carry these?
So ATEP demolition has an outstanding project awaiting the transfer for the county property to the district property. When that happens, then we'll be demolishing the final of the phases. So that's a phased project, and there's that one last one outstanding, which is why we carry it still. The next one that I think you're talking about is the ADA transition plan. We have done a portion of that work already, which is specifically related to facilities work. And there's another second part to that, which involves curriculum and websites and that kind of thing for ADA access. And so that will be a phase two on that project as well, we'll be moving into that.
Okay, so we don't, we don't close it out by phase, we just keep the whole thing open until?
We run it by the budget number. So the budget's been assigned to it, and we're waiting to move into the next phases, yes.
Okay, thank you for the.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to seven point five, Monthly Financial Status Report. And seven point six, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Okay, now we move on to eight point oh, Reports from Administration and Governance Groups. And we'll start off with Saddleback College Academic Senate. And he's not there. So we'll move on to the Faculty Association.
No report.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the IVC Academic Senate.
No report.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on to Vice Chancellor, Technology and Learning Services.
For their last meeting, I'd like to recognize a couple of retirements. Dan Johnson is a programmer of long standing with excellent work, but I'd like to especially recognize one of my direct reports, an exemplary manager who's retiring, Jim Faniff. I want to thank him for his service to our district for all these many decades. Thanks.
Thank you.
I want to start by thanking and acknowledging the two Academic Senate Presidents. We are listening, there's been a number of expedited recruitments that have affected our faculty in terms of them being able to be present on these hiring committees. The most recent is the Vice Chancellor of Business Services. And I want to thank both the Academic Senate Presidents for allowing us to keep that expedited schedule to get someone in place and hired in a permanent status. Second, I want to honor the three HR employees that are retiring. To Beverly Johnson and Fran Francis Miller, they have worked tirelessly since I arrived to ensure that I'm in good standing and that HR is in as good a shape as possible, and I am so appreciative of both of their efforts. It's going to be a very sad day when I walk in in the morning and I'm not able to see Beverly Johnson's smiling face. She's been wonderful to work with. Finally, I want to thank and honor and acknowledge Teddy Lorch. To say she's been tireless, she's been here early and she's been here late, and she has been doing everything possible to support me as a new vice chancellor. She is trying to take care of employee issues that have been pending and lasting for a while, and she's here tonight to help support human resources. And while she should be cruising into retirement and able to relax, to her credit, she is doing everything possible to ensure that I'm supported till the moment she leaves. So thank you, Teddy Lorch.
And a former trustee on this board as well.
Thank you for that, that's a nice tribute. Vice, Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Jim Weiss.
Thank you. We also have several folks in business services, kind of running through all areas of business services. And I really appreciate board members attempting to get to some of the retirement parties. Very much appreciated that, seeing you all there. We are looking at some reorganization in both facilities and in the purchasing area in particular, where we've taken some significant hits in terms of retirement. And so we'll be working mightily, and we're looking really at the entire organization in those areas. I'd also like to commend, as trustee Lang did, and I thank you for your comments, commend the finance staff. You know, I came in late in August, so all the work was last year's fiscal, last fiscal year, and they did a marvelous job. These are some very fine audit reports that you have. The results are outstanding, and you just don't see this everywhere. So I commend the staff, including Carol and Davita, you know, at the colleges, which I think of as being part of the finance team of the district, as you also noted. So you've got a good group there, and you can be proud of them.
Thank you. IVC Classified Senate.
We had a kind of slow month this month, but I wanted to thank trustee Milchuker for joining us at our retiree meeting on the 28th of November. We had about five retirees that we were honoring that day, so that was very nice. And also, in my written report that I have here about the two projects, I just wanted to expand on that a little bit. We had two of our classified members go to a leadership retreat in September, and they had to come up with an equity-based project and be the lead on it. And we have one that's actually going to result in a certificate available to classified to participate in it. So that's kind of exciting, and they're going to be doing that in the spring, so, that's all.
Thank you. CS, CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. CSEA wishes to acknowledge all the retirees, want to wish them well. Specifically for me personally, this will be the last board meeting that Mark Ruman will be directing. And so it's going to seem quite different after all these years of working with him in the control room for the last 15-plus years. So that's going to be very strange for myself and some of my colleagues who also work with me. Many times, being the union president, you get to meet a lot of people, and you get to see a lot of faces very often. And people like Joyce Bartlamane and Teddy Lorch, who, that's probably my second home, I practically lived in her office. But these people were really people that I would see all the time, interact with, talk biz, and we want to wish them all well. All the retirees, all 116 of them. We also wish to wish all of you the happiest of winter holidays, and I hope that you get to enjoy a lot of times with your family and friends, and get that well-deserved rest. Thank you.
Thank you. You're not Craig O'Connor. Saddleback College Classified Senate, I think we've done this rodeo before.
My name's Cora Swanson, and I'm filling in for Craig on behalf of the Classified Senate at Saddleback. We recently concluded our giving thanks to our student vet food drive, and we raised approximately $2,000 in donations and enough non-perishable goods to support about 58 of our student vets' families for the holidays, and it was a huge success. And so we just wanted to, you know, give a big thanks to everybody at Saddleback College and also at the District Services Office who participated in supporting our students. Thank you.
Thank you, and before we adjourn, I just, I want to wish again well all our retirees. Spent sometimes decades working here, and I can assure you, you made a difference. And sometimes we have some tough conversations up here, but it doesn't mean we don't appreciate what you've done for the district and our students. And behalf of the board, I thank you all very much, and enjoy your holidays.